Good afternoon and welcome to the city county joint work session, September sixth, two thousand twenty-two four P M. I've got to read that this meeting is called to order. Welcome and thank you for participating in the city of Helena and Lewis and Clark County joint work session. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in in an effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. This time I think the Madam Clerk one of us just introduce ourselves, so I will start this way and we'll go around and introduce ourselves. My name is Walmart Collins, Mayor City of Helena.
Andy Shirtlift, City Commissioner.
Jim McCormick, Lewis and Clark County Commissioner.
Tom Rolfe, Lewis and Clark County Commissioner.
Andy Hunthausen County Commissioner.
Roger Balls, Administrative Officer for the County.
Chief.
Brooke Hattie, Holland Police Department.
Anne McCauley, Director of Grants and Purchasing for the County.
Amanda Opitz, Grants Administrator for the City.
Greg McNally, Director of Community Development Planning for the County.
Tim Burton, Interim City Manager.
Sean Logan, Helen City Commissioner.
Lauren DeRee, Helen City Commission.
Brad Langston, Open Lands Manager, City of Helen.
Emily Dean, City Commissioner.
Welcome one and all. I hope you had a refresh. Labor Day. I didn't. Anyway, back to Commissioner Cummins questions. Anybody, yes, go ahead, Commissioner Logan.
Just say, uh, welcome to Commissioner Shirtlift on his first.
City County.
Dive into this, so, yeah.
Thank you, looking forward to it, yeah.
Any others? People are welcoming Commissioner Shirtlift quietly. Okay, we'll keep moving along, both of board appointments. A selection of ninth consolidated city county planning board member. Greg McNally.
Good afternoon, Mayor, County Commissioners, City Commissioners. You have before you a staff report, uh, I hope you all have a copy of it, if you don't, I have copies here. It's regarding, uh, the selection of a ninth member of our consolidated city county planning board. As you know, we have a, uh, consolidated city county planning board with four members appointed by the county commissioners or members appointed by our city commissioners and the mayor and one member that's usually jointly appointed. In this case, in compliance with seventy-six-one-two-oh-one M C A, the eight seated members of the consolidated city county planning board do select that ninth member for, uh, recommendation to these, to both of your boards. Uh, that final member of the planning board would serve for a three-year term with the consent and approval of both of your boards. Uh, five applications were submitted, uh, from five qualified applicants uh, to the members of the planning board on, uh, in April of two thousand twenty-two. And after consideration and discussion, uh, scheduled meeting on April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, the planning board voted to recommend uh, that they would accept three of those applicants, uh, for the city and counties to consider and indicated that this would support the selection of any one of those three. Uh, my staff report includes uh, the minutes from that meeting, the reference statute and the applications for the three members that were selected by the board. One of those members is our, uh, new city commissioner, Andy Shirtlift. I imagine you will probably, uh, preclude yourself from selection to the planning board. But you're in good company, the planning board is willing to welcome you in. The city and the mayor has welcomed you in, so. The other two recommended applicants are Gene Walburn and Joseph Gilbert. Again, both of the applications are in the packet as well as the minutes from the meeting. Board did ask the members' questions or the, the, the applicant's questions and you can read about their, those questions and the responses in those minutes. If you have any questions for staff, I am available.
Thanks, Mr. McNally. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, please process, how do we want to do this? How we?
I think what we'll do is, um, if we don't have any objections for the forty-three, we're, at, at the end of discussion, we'll recommend someone make a motion for all three. Go ahead.
Well, we have one out of the three that we need to choose.
Oh, one out of the three.
One of the two.
One of the two, yeah, I guess, three technically. So one out of the two and so, and then we'd have to probably approve them at our individual commission meetings, I would assume at some point in the future, but today's the discussion day and.
Okay. You bet.
Um, yeah, just wondering.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Mr. Mayor, um, uh, speaking with Mr. Burton, I don't speak for him, but uh, again, just reiterate, the intent today for Mr. McNally was to present this information to you. Typically at these meetings, actions are not taken, they're usually informational in nature of presentations. We wanted to give you this information for you to have it. And, uh, perhaps Mr. Burton and I could, could work together with you all to facilitate uh, the selection occurring at, at the separate elected bodies, future meetings. Uh, hopefully, you know, a conclusion will be arrived at, uh, but it's only one, one selection that you would be making.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Balls. Do you have any other commission discussion on this topic?
Mr. Mayor, the only thing I will say, if I may, is that, uh, they look like they're both excellent candidates. Um, however, um, I've known Mr. Walburn for thirty years and he's, uh, a great guy and would be an excellent, would be an excellent candidate, so I just want you to, want you to know that he is my preferred candidate uh, of the two, uh, but I think they're both excellent. All three would have been.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Go ahead.
Commissioner, uh, thank you, Mr. McNally, I'd like to respectfully decline or withdraw if I need to do that. But, um, I think the other two had the opportunity to listen to their interviews and I think either one of them would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor. I did review, uh, the two applications, uh, part of this meeting, looking at them again. Mr. Gilbert's, uh, professional experience, uh, and, uh, expertise, I believe, uh, would, uh, lend itself well, uh, to the function to which, uh, he would be, uh, he would be. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner. Um, I actually have a question about the makeup of the current, um, city county planning board. From what I recall, there we actually have quite a few, um, people on there who are kind of subject matter experts in various fields. Would someone maybe be able to talk about some of that experience that we have, because I think that does impact who we might want to choose here? I think there's one candidate that has, um, kind of a more maybe a broader view of the impact of what this board does and another that has more maybe specific, um, subject matter expertise. I think both are really valuable, but I think the context of what the board looks like right now actually impacts that kind of decision.
Mr. Mayor, um, Commissioners, uh, the current board, as I said, is comprised of four members appointed by the city, four members appointed by the county. You folks appointed them, you probably, probably are more familiar with their, uh, quoted expertise in their applications. However, I've worked with all of these individuals through their appointments. These are all very dedicated individuals committed to their work as planning board members uh, in their offerings of providing recommendations to both boards on subdivision projects as well as zoning regulations, including, uh, growth policy work as well. Uh, all the board members we currently have are, as I said, very committed, they attend regularly um, and ask questions and strive to participate effectively and, and want to make strong recommendations, uh, to each of your boards, uh, in their actions, so. Uh, all, all of these folks, just like most of our volunteers, are really committed, uh, to the work that are required to do for their particular war.
Thank you, sir. Please.
Uh, just briefly, um, I want to say thank you to people who put themselves forward for consideration. I know planning boards can be time-consuming processes, so grateful for people who step forward, uh, and I think both candidates uh, do bring interesting perspectives and I look forward to our discussion at the city commission, um, choosing one, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, just, if I could, just to follow up your question, Mr. McNally. There, there's no specific required or recommended fields or expertise, uh, knowledge that, my, just citizens that qualify, right? So, we're not like, for example, with Board of Health, we typically have a doctor on there, we have somebody that, you know, in certain areas that may lend specific expertise that's not necessarily the case in this particular board, right?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, just, uh, just residency requirements is the basic requirement there. Uh, however, uh, as a planner, I do like to work with those board members who are interested in asking a lot of questions and trying to learn as much as they can about the process. And you see that in both of these applicants that are in this, uh, pool here.
Thanks, great, thanks. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I, I did want to add one thing from the city's perspective. We do actually have a city vacancy that we were going to be advertising for and going to be coming for, so just something for you to consider.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do you have any public comments? Madam Clerk, any raised hands? All right, we'll move along. Presentations. County ARPA overview. Chief Administrative Officer Balls. You have the floor.
Thank you, uh, Mayor and, uh, and, uh, city commissioners and county commissioners. I'd really like to turn the presentation over to, um, Anne McCauley. She's prepared a, an update regarding the county process that was used and decisions that were made by the county commissioners.
Okay.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Roger, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, again, I'm Anne McCauley, I'm the Director of the County's Grants and Purchasing Department, and I've been leading our ARPA efforts since last May of twenty-one. Mental trick. Okay. So, brief overview of my presentation today, I'll give a snapshot of the county's ARPA funding to date. Um, the timeline that we've been working on for the last year and four months. Our request process, this includes both our community requests as well as our internal county department requests. Our current obligated projects list, um, a brief overview of our story map that we put together online. And then I'll summarize what we learned today. So, as of today, our total direct allocation that came to Lewis and Clark County from the U S Treasury, so this is the section six oh-three of the American Rescue Plan Act, uh, was just under thirteen point five million. And we have obligated to date just over ten point five million, so seventy-eight percent of that total obligation, um, with about two point nine five million remaining. Additionally, we have from House Bill six thirty-two, this was the funding that the state received under the section six oh-two of the American Rescue Plan Act, um, that was set aside for cities, counties throughout the state to specifically do water and sewer projects. So, just like the city, we, um, had two point three million obligated for that, and we almost obligated all of that and anticipate doing so by November one, which is the deadline to fully fund that. Uh, we had a one-to-one match on that, um, unlike the city, however, the water or the county, for the exception of some stormwater, doesn't own water and sewer infrastructure. But we have a lot of water and sewer districts, associations, rural schools, um, and even a hunterite colony that does have eligible water and sewer projects. So that's where a good chunk of those funds have gone to date, is sponsoring those entities with those dollars. And then lastly, I just wanted to note our leveraging impact, so this six point five million is a pretty conservative estimate, actually. But of the, uh, about thirteen million that we've obligated between the direct allocation and the minimum allocation to date, we've more than, got more than one dollar for every two dollars of ARPA funding, which is a pretty good return. Again, that's probably conservative. A brief overview of our ARPA timeline, so back to May of twenty-one, the ARPA Act got signed on May third, or March third, excuse me, of two thousand twenty-one. By May of twenty-one, Treasury had released their interim rule. So, like through my position, I was able to dive into that interim rule pretty quickly and start figuring out eligibility and what projects we would be able to do with that funding. We received our first tranche in, I think, the end of June twenty-one. And working with our county commissioners, started developing an early list of projects, um, ideas as well as ones that fit those eligibility requirements. So the interim rule was much tighter on flexibility of how ARPA funds could be used. Um, the revenue replacement, for instance, was a complicated equation that our very own Nancy Eversen did an excellent job at calculating. And then, um, I think seven hundred thousand dollars somewhere in that ballpark was our calculation for revenue replacement that we could use for government services that have a little bit more flexibility on. So a lot of our early projects were specific to those eligible categories that we thought we had to fit in. Um, the state launched their water and sewer program in July of twenty-one. That's when we start, started receiving a number of applications from water sewer districts, other entities, from county, from those funds. I started monthly ARPA meetings with our commissioners in September of twenty-one and found those to be very valuable as we started receiving more requests. Um, and started processing requests, we were doing all of our requests and obligations in formal meetings. Um, so bringing forward all of our projects, um, to a commission meeting for approval. In November of twenty-one, I was very fortunate to have hired Carrie Luthers to serve as our program, our ARPA program specialist. Carrie came with a lot of good grant experience and this is, she's been crucial to our ability to move quite a bit of our ARPA funds to date, with our minimum allocation as well as our direct allocation funds. In January of two thousand twenty-two, the final rule was released by Treasury, and the big news out of that was raising that revenue replacement to ten million dollars. So that really opened up our flexibility as well as every municipal and county around the country's ability to use those funds more flexibly at their local level. And then lastly, this winter and spring, we started taking more formal requests from our community partner organizations as well as developing a county department request through our F Y twenty-three budget process. We'll talk a little bit about that process. I lumped in our water and sewer requests to our community projects, um, just, that's kind of where they landed, but they were a little bit separate process. So in your packet, there is a community project funding request narrative, this is the form that we use to send out to mostly nonprofits and community um, for their seeking request of ARPA funds. We received twenty-four requests in all for just over eight point seven million dollars, this did include water and sewer projects. Our review process was, uh, we built an informal or an internal committee uh, where we reviewed requests and then mapped out a recommendation plan for our Board of County Commissioners to consider. There was a lot of factors that went into that, but they were funding availability, community needed impact, and other potential funding resources were available, again, getting that, that leveraging impact, and then project readiness. As you're well aware, the ARPA funds do have a timeline on them, they have to be obligated by the end of twenty-four and spent by the end of twenty twenty-six, calendar year. Our recommendation plan, and again, I'm going to please note in general, because there were certainly exceptions to this, and ultimately, our Board of County Commissioners have the final say on how projects are funded or not. Um, though of our community projects, those that were one-time only in nature and invested in necessary infrastructure needs were recommended, and again, that's included most of our water and sewer requests. And again, in general, projects that were in the early planning phase or had a long-term operational needs commitment, like they might have asked for personnel support for only a year, um, were not recommended for funding at this time. Again, that was just kind of along the nature of this being one-time only funding and not wanting to support projects that we're gonna, a year from now, have to come back for additional funding or weren't quite there in terms of what the final outcomes could be. But could certainly be revisited in the future. Our county department requests, so that form looks very similar, should have color coded these, um, as our community requests with a couple different changes. For our department requests, again, we coincided this with our F Y twenty-three budget cycle. There was about three million dollars that was already obligated in F Y twenty-two to county departments, this was largely our public health response. Um, so a lot of the COVID staffing, the vaccine staffing, the testing site, all those expenses that were already covered. So these were new requests, they're twenty-three. And we did set up request guidelines for our departments. Again, this was one-time only funding, no personnel requests outside of the temporary staff or COVID response. We asked that individual project requests be no more than one million and that departments provide a detailed budget as possible. For those of departments that requested more than one project, or submitted more than one project, we asked that they rank them, and we asked that the department heads sign off on that ranking. Um, the normal ARPA restrictions, no debt servicing, rainy day funds and like, weren't eligible. And then again, that, there was a deadline on when these funds had to be spent, so kind of with a project timeline in place. For department requests, we received twenty-six in total from nine different departments. Um, for over seven point eight-five million in new requests, again, we had about three million that had prior been obligated in twenty-two, and three departments submitted multiple requests. Our review process was very similar, our internal committee met, we reviewed the recommendations, um, based on funding, project needed impact, other funding sources, whether those established guidelines were met and then also on the department priority rankings. So we were also looking at, we do have some cares reserve funding still available and also what projects best fit under ARPA cares. If there was a capital investment plan in place that could also cover projects, um, or other grant funding. So our recommendation plan for our departments turned out to work pretty well, that we were able to fund each department's top request. And then for those departments that submitted more than one, we could do their second and third one. So that leads me to what I finally call our rainbow list, and it looks like the one in the packet, I need to fix my margin, it's pretty small on, on that. Um, but this is our list of obligated projects of our direct allocation to date. That's the rainbow top table, and then on the bottom is our water and sewer, uh, minimum allocation grants. So there's thirty-six projects on there. And a little bit different on your handout is the ARPA expenditure category is included, which probably won't mean much to many of you outside of Amanda in her recording. Um, from a public perspective, we ended up grouping these projects into five major categories, public health, COVID response, community assistance. This would be our non-profit organizations, largely water and sewer infrastructure projects, public safety and services, this is where a lot of our public works, the sheriff's office. Some other community projects, and then county facility improvements. And then lastly, our program administration, so our ARPA program specialist is funded a term three-year position and being paid for. So here's another graphic, yes, please.
I just have one question on that slide, um, on the, uh, lawn justice center remodel. Uh, was that the, that's not the boiler? The, the county side of the boilers, or do you know what that was, what that goes to?
Um, I think it's, I'm not sure, Nancy or Roger, if we know exactly what that is going to cover to date.
Okay.
Um.
Last, last one.
Yeah, it's hard to see, it's covered by the.
Kind of a circleish, last one.
Um. Yeah, I'm just. That is the boilers. It is the boilers, okay, thanks.
So, a graphic of this, the rainbow list, this is the ten point five of our direct allocation, just broken out into those different categories. I refer to this as our triple pursuit pie, um, and I think we did a pretty good job of getting a lot of different elements, um, with the the COVID and the Congress intended, those different eligible categories of initial onset of ARPA. And this is our story map, if I can get this to pop up on the right screen. Thank you, today. So this is a pretty basic story map, working with Eric Spannberg in our G I S department. Um, just kind of the background of ARPA, the county's ARPA funding, a lot of the same information I presented today. Couple pictures of our projects, um, this is Florence Critten Cooney home. And then this is where the public can go to get a better description of what the projects are. Takes a moment to load. I'll click on one of these blue dots, this will be a water and sewer project. This is a ten-mile Pleasant Valley Water Sewer District upgrade. Um, the ARPA funding amount is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, this was actually a minimum allocation grant award for this project. But you'll see a project summary. If there's more information available, what category it fell under. We'll get to the point of putting project photos in there to come. Um, but if you're looking for more information about what each of those projects on this list are doing, this is where you can see those project descriptions. Very similar pie chart, the numbers are just a little bit different because it is pulling in the minimum allocation amount into these, this pie chart, and the one I showed previously was just our direct allocation. So the percentages are just a little bit different there. Can I just close this?
Yep.
And then to summarize, a couple of things we've noted or learned so far, having that dedicated ARPA staff has been really crucial to our ability to get these projects out the door and get them underway, we still have a lot of work to do. Um, I think we have nine minimum allocation grant awards coming from D N R C, we expect two more, so that's eleven grant awards to manage, and most of those are subrecipients. Um, and then the, the thirty-six projects here, some of them are going to be internal, done pretty seamlessly within our, our county, and other ones are going to require quite a bit of management and lift. Uh, managing expectations. And this is just referring to managing expect, expectations both internally with our county departments and staff as well as our community organizations. On the surface, thirteen point five million dollars seems like a lot of money. Um, but as we all know, the dollar's not quite going as far as it used to, and we've seen just like everywhere, increases in projects and things costing more. Um, definitely our, our requests exceeded our available funds, and I think they would have exceeded far more if we had really gone out, um, and done a public announcement. I think it was important to establish your guidelines and priorities, so that was with the support of the county commissioners identifying one-time only funding projects that wouldn't have a long tail. And in part, that was helpful through the department's ranking their priority projects too. And then lastly, is just back to that leveraging piece, so looking at projects that where we maybe weren't able to do, you know, the two full two and a half million on the Cooney acquisition project for Florence Critten, but we were able to leverage that with the C D B G award that did get them to that, along with their own funding and on
awesome.
Stuff to happen, so where those leveraging impact stories were happening was a really good success too. So I'm not sure if we wanted to question now or later.
That was going to be my question, were you leveraging other funds or other program dollars?
Yeah, so with the Florence Critten, Cooney acquisition, the Cooney building down off Me Drive near Garden Works. Um, we were able to, there was actually some pair spending still available through Montana Department of Commerce. So C D B G care, there's coronavirus, um, so we were able to sponsor them for those dollars, that was one point two five million in C D B G funds. They married up in our six hundred thousand dollar award, got them one point eight two five million. And then they were able to fundraise and they had some capital reserves to get to the finish line on that project. A lot of our water and sewer projects, those water sewer districts had additional funding, married it up with the MSET program, excuse me, it takes me a second to say that, when the Montana Endowment Program, or they have their own reserves. Yeah, we were able to find other funding sources.
Comments or questions from the commission?
One question.
Please.
Can you maybe talk about the thought process behind having that one million dollar cap on projects?
I think that was just for our department request, was to give every department an opportunity to come up with a project that could get funded, or that we could kind of look at those, again, knowing we only had less than eight million available for departments. It kind of just gave us and them a place to work from.
Do you want to add anything further to that?
Any other comments from the body? Not one to thank you. All right, we'll move on to the city ARPA overview. And we will be looking at manager Burton.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As at least the city side is aware, we're not as far along in the ARPA process as the county is. We have engaged on several occasions, the city commission staff has been developing structure and parameters, and quite frankly, I think we've had the opportunity to learn a lot from the county in the process that they've already been through. So there are more decisions to be made, but Mayor, with your permission, I please turn it over to Amanda Opitz, who will bring you up to speed on where we are today.
So you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Commissioner, we're just getting set up with my presentation.
What a good-looking bunch on the TV, who are they?
Nothing like having a group of people look over your shoulder while trying to get started.
You know, I don't think you have one of these.
Here you can have this one.
Sorry for everyone at home that has to make with the scroll, everyone just look away for a second.
As manager Burton indicated, I'm Amanda Opitz, I'm the new city grants administrator as of July. And I'm joined by Sheila Danielson, our finance director. Luckily, I don't think that we duplicated too much of the background information that Anne already went through, but we were under the same stipulations as in terms of timelines. When we received our tranche, the ten million dollar cap in terms of revenue that we, revenue loss that we were able to claim, we're underneath that, so we actually have fewer stipulations, subrecipient tracking, things like that, that we are responsible for. We're also in a very different place than I would say than the county in terms of our timeline. It's advantageous for our new commissioner shortlift, joining us now as we're just sort of embarking upon this process. Of course, we've had turnover in the city manager's office, unfortunately, of course, lost commissioner fever, so we're just a little bit further behind the county, but we're well on our way, I would say. So this is just a quick overview of our, the total amounts that we received from treasury and from the state ARPA funding. The local recovery funds, just above eight million, eight four. We received five million, five million one hundred and ninety-four in the state minimum allocation grants that Anne was speaking about related to water and sewer projects. And then we've also received one point nine, just shy of two million for our state competitive grants. So for the state, or for the minimum allocation grants for water projects, we've already allocated about thirteen point, thirteen million three hundred and ninety-nine for total project costs. And that split out, you can see here is the way that we built that funding. One point eight for local, from local recovery funds, so from our total allocation, that would be less that one point eight million dollars from our ARPA funds, that's all we have obligated to date. We have five point, five point one, two, in the state minimum allocations, we received that competitive grant. And then also, we received four million from the state revolving loan fund.
And Amanda, I might interject just there, the four point four million in SRA loans, that's considered the city's, that's the city's match for those minimum allocation and grants, and there's a potential for loan forgiveness on that, is why the public works director wanted to pursue the SRA funds for the matched dollars on those particular notes, or on those particular projects. Thank you.
So as I mentioned, after the second tranche, what the city received was eight point four million dollars, less that one point eight that was already obligated to our water projects. We currently have just over six and a half million dollars that's available for us to obligate. This is a little bit redundant, but as Anne mentioned, because of the flexibility that was allowed with the final rule, we were able to claim our full amount, that eight point four million as recovery or revenue loss, excuse me, and so that allows us a lot more flexibility to obligate those funds as we choose outside of the parameters in terms of the timeframe. So once again, as Anne mentioned, they must be obligated by the end of twenty twenty-four and spent by the end of twenty twenty-six. So to date, the city process, as we've laid it out to prepare the commission to have a good understanding of what our needs are, we have been systematically going through the capital improvement plans with each one of our departments. In your packet, you will see a list of unfunded capital from this past budget cycle. In addition to those items, our departments have been laying out their five to 10-year plans in terms of needs, so that the commission understands what those internal needs are going to be before looking at obligating or allocating money outside of the city. At this point, the commission has not indicated any priorities specific to that funding. Our process is somewhat similar to the county in that we are in the, currently going through the process of accepting applications from our internal departments. It's the same application for internal departments that the county used, thank you, Anne. With slight changes, obviously, to meet our needs, but those will be due, those are actually due from our departments tomorrow. So we'll be gathering those, providing those, that information to manager Burton, and then presenting those to the commission on the twenty-first for your consideration, and then the final vote will come through from you all in terms of allocating for internal department projects in October. For our external application, there's a draft of what that might look like in your packet as well. Again, I think the process that we're going through is looking at what the commission wants to allocate for internal first, and then what's left will be made available for an external process. So we don't know at this point what that dollar amount will be for external projects, but we'll be looking to have that application open up once we have internal applications identified. Oh, and this is just more into the, apologies, that's probably out of place, but the internal unfunded monies from this past fiscal year, you do have that full list available. As well as, I think, the projects that are, that we'll be looking towards that we've been speaking about throughout the process of going for our capital projects. There's any questions?
I might also interject there too, Amanda, that there have been a couple of other capital needs that are not on this, you know, general capital list. Just recently, there have been, you know, quotes for equipment that came in way more than what, you know, they had originally planned on, and so I just spoke with Bridget and facilities, and she's going to be adding a few more requests to her facility requests, just based on some recent quotes that they they've received and are exceeded their anticipated amount for their budget requests. So I think this is a little bit, this is a summary, is a point in time that we put this together, but we'll know more by the end of tomorrow what all of those internal requests will be throughout the city.
And we know of at least two projects that we are looking to split with the county. One is the ITS building on Mount Helena that was start by lightning. I think it's twenty-five thousand that ITNS will be submitting for, that I know the county is also looking at potentially funding. And then the CAD RMS system with our SSD. I believe it's, is it seven fifty?
It's the, the city's portion.
City's portion is, yeah, seven fifty, county would be seventy as well, so.
And in addition to the boiler over at the Lawn Justice Center, correct? Discuss the commitment on our part.
I think that's.
That's in our.
Are you?
Yes.
You know what? I'll tell you what, I think you further than I thought, something happened with it.
Comments or questions from the commission?
Here, Ms. Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you very much. So the CAD RMS, seven fifty city, seven fifty county, it's a total project cost of estimated at one million five hundred thousand, is that right? That was a total project cost?
Yes.
Right there, thanks, Chief.
Well, and I will make reference, Mayor, reforming, it is a point in time. And thank you as well, we haven't got firm numbers yet, because it's not out there or anything like that, but that's what we've been told. I don't know, we came up with seven fifty to start with number, but that's what we started with, so. Obviously, I'm thinking, even though I just learned that tomorrow, you know, that the cars that we need to order and ten thousand more. I've gone on the price, so, as with everything, so I just wanted to throw that out there, but yes, the million five, seven fifty city, seven fifty county.
Thanks, Chief. It's been a while since I've been to a meeting and ensure their discussions continue on that. Any idea on timeline?
The timeline I submitted, we would like to have it, they're saying first quarter of October, first quarter of next year of twenty-three, where they would have an RFP in place.
Okay.
So I would say that put us six months out from implementation, so by the end of next year, early twenty-four would be in place.
Okay.
But money's spent well before the deadline, of course.
Sure. Okay, thank you very much, all right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments or questions from the, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, similar line of question for you. Do we know, or have you received any information yet about what money we might be receiving from the public safety bill that was signed by the president last month? I know there's a bunch of money in there for personnel, but I didn't know if we had any updated information on what could use maybe for technology.
I have not heard anything.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions?
Do we know if the, maybe this is for ten, do we know if the league has put out anything yet on, I haven't seen anything, but.
So Mayor, Commissioner, I know that the bill passed. I don't think there's any final rules in place or the structure's been built as yet. The league, Montana, and the national league will certainly be tracking that as it develops.
Well, maybe that's just something we can keep in mind. I mean, obviously, we don't have to have all of it extended for, you know, more or less another one and a half fiscal years, but if, if there is money there that we can leverage, you know, that'd be an ideal place to do so. I do know, I mean, there is specific money, you know, allocated for personnel, I just don't know about. For something like this, yeah.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I'm usually really shy, but this one time I'll make. We just encourage our grant teams, finance teams, as well as our administrators and commissioners, when we get to that point, we'll, we still have a couple of million dollars to obligate at some point. And as has been presented at the end, if there's whatever money is remaining that considering turn to the community, and I would just encourage us to consider at that time that to work together to try and make the greatest impact in our community when it comes time, rather than doing our own little things, which may be great, but if there's some community broader impact we can make together, I would just encourage us to consider that and be thinking about that as we go forward to our process.
Mr. Mayor, just going off Commissioner Huthen's point, would it be possible to maybe, because we'll be going out to the community for requests after our internal requests are completed? Maybe it might be worthwhile to, for us to maybe get an idea of what are some of the areas of support that the county might be willing to get on board with, just so we can maybe be more thoughtful about how we evaluate some projects that, you know, it's a no-go for sure from the county, but here are some of the other things that you all might be interested in, so that we can really maximize our return on investment for some of these projects for the community.
All right, yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may, thank you, Commissioner Dean. Getting to the, just back to the basics and considerations in our decision tree, we looked at and continue to look at, I call them bricks and mortar projects, or those projects that don't have ongoing costs and expenses. And we consider that in our community partnerships with organizations, you know, with, for instance, the Florence Critten. They, those dollars are leveraged, they manage those pieces. And so that works very well for us, so that was and remains to be a basic tenet for our considerations, just for food and thought. All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
You again?
Yeah, can you believe it? Just a word of caution as well, I think that part of the reason that we held some money in reserve is because, just as the chief said, you know, gosh, what if it comes in and it's whatever more? Or we get down the road with one of the projects we funded and it can't be completed because they didn't have enough money or something like that, so it's going to be a little bit, you know, see how it goes as we go along, but thoughtful and working together, I think is the best strategy.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Commissioner, again. We're being very conservative with our discretion, discretionary funds, the CARES Act funds, keeping those in reserve, because we don't have the restrictions on CARES Act funds that we do on ARPA funds. There are timelines there, but to your point, being conservative with, with the dollars that remain, because I think we alluded to it here today, is, and I'm thinking about that, that's why I asked a question about the CAD RMS, chief, is inflation, it's just kicking our tails and a lot of projects. And so there's those, to your point, Commissioner Huthen, I think, is the unknowns, the unknowns that are out there. We don't know what's going to come and bite us in the future, so we're just being very careful with it, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? Do you have any public comments? Oh, Director Danielson, are you still coming on, or you tag team with Ms. Opitz? Okay. Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any online? All right. Thank you, interim city manager Burton. Joint discussion opportunities for joint projects. Do we have any here? Well, I think we just discussed that, right?
We did.
Okay. Okay. At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address this body? Madam Clerk. Thank you. Is there any final comments from the body?
None here. Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor.
This meeting is adjourned.
All right. Thank you.